All right, I'd like to call to order the January 23rd, 2023 Mount Lake Terrace Planning Commission meeting in order. Please take the roll.
Chair Batista.
Here.
Vice Chair Sandoval.
Here.
Commissioner Betcher.
Present.
Commissioner Harrison.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Payne Donovan.
Present.
And Commissioner Morgan asked to be excused.
All right, and might as well take care of this now. Does anybody would like to make a motion to excuse?
Motion to excuse Commissioner Morgan.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Commissioner Morgan has an excuse absence for tonight. All right, item number three, approval of the December 27th, 2022 meeting minutes. Anybody have any changes or corrections? Not hearing or seeing any, and I'm having to remember to look at the screen to make sure I don't forget where. Okay, all right, so not hearing any. We'll go ahead and accept those as presented. Moving to item number four, public comment. Is there anybody from the public who wish to speak tonight for any item that is not currently on our agenda? Let the record show there is no public in person. Is there anybody?
Yep, no one in person and no one online.
All right, no one online. We'll go ahead and move on to item number five then. Discussion of Planning Commission Work Program 2023.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to take an opportunity to introduce who will be the new planning secretary. So Jennifer, you want to introduce Lan?
This is Lan, Lan Wen. She is our new administrative assistant for engineering and CED, and she's sitting up in our admin pod, but she will also be your milk taker, secretary for her, so we should leave. So she's going to sit with me a couple more times, and then she will be the one that shows.
Excellent. Thank you. Welcome. Glad to have you.
Thank you very much.
Jumping right in.
She said she's still laughing, so I said that's a good thing because you have to be able to laugh. So Jennifer, are my screens looking a little bit different to share than previous? Do I just go to Zoom?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, there we go. Share screen. All right, thank you. All right, so, whoops, looks like I can already see typo. So I'll go back and correct that plan updates to 2023. So typically, your work program would look like it filled this entire page. And the reason it's not is because we're going to have our hands full as we go through this, as you're going to be seeing, for work that needs to be done, not only this year, but some of it's going to roll into next year. And mainly, it's going to be our comp plan update, which is going to entail work through this year and then into next year with adoption required by the state by December of 2024. So it's going to take up, in my estimation, all of that time. And prior to a couple people on the planning commission, there was a conversation, and there has been a conversation for many years of doing subarea planning for the planning commission, and not a lot of subarea planning has been accomplished. And so one of the things we talked about is to include an emphasis on a couple of subareas in the city that the planning commission voted on, that they would like to at least get a start with this comp plan update, that we could focus on them, get a start, and then kind of start going through some other areas for some subarea planning after the major update. So the two areas were Cascade View and Melody Hill, so I included those on the work program, just to remind everybody that per the last discussion, those were kind of the areas that were selected. And so that's really the only plan update that's on the forefront right now. There's been no applications for anybody asking for a plan update to this point, either for this next year. That may change in 2024. For code updates for this year, we have a few that I'm identifying as priority. The first one is that the state, Washington State Building Code Council, has updates to the international building and fire codes. And some folks may remember back in '21, we did the updates for 2018. The council kind of got behind schedule with COVID and updates, and so we made some changes to the building and fire code in '21. Well, now the '21 updates are slated to go into effect in June of '23. So those updates will automatically go into effect. The reason that we take a look at those updates is because local jurisdictions can have to meet the minimum requirements of the Building Code Council, but anything different or above those requirements, local jurisdictions have an opportunity to consider those. And so we'll be taking a look at those code updates moving forward.
Thanks. Sorry, I guess red is on. I had a question. Are we just looking at the building code itself, or are we also looking at things like the energy code?
So there were a lot of energy code updates that we adopted as part of last year, or in 2021, I mean, but I mean that, you know, we're opening up the code, so we can go through that, and you guys can consider it. As far as the 2021 updates from the Building Code Council, I know that therefore, the international building code, they don't include any of the mechanical codes or the energy code this time around, and then they have some fire code provisions that they've included. So we'll have a conversation about that. And then there's also been amendments or changes in state law to the State Environmental Policy Act, which is what we do for environmental review. Those amendments, some of them have taken place and are automatically adopted and went into effect Friday, January 20th. But there's also some provisions, what are called thresholds in state law, of allowance of certain things like number of residential units, or number of parking spaces, or size of buildings, which you're exempt from environmental review. And so those thresholds have been changed. A local jurisdiction can adopt those or not adopt those, but this is an opportunity for us to take a look at those thresholds under the State Environmental Policy Act and see if the city wants to consider and adopt those. So we'll need to take a look at those as well. And I figured we could kind of roll those through at the same time as we're taking a look at the building and fire codes as well. So for those amendments. Other amendments that we'd be working on, and these are going to be something we're going to talk about as we do the comp planning, and then also into 2024, is looking to enact amendments to our zoning code as much as possible where we have changes to our comp plans. So if we have changes to our comp plan map for land use designations, then amending our zoning map and zoning code, if you will, will need to be done too. So when we can do that together, then we hit the ground running as far as implementation, kind of like what we did with the town center subarea planning. So that is a desire to do that when we're doing our comp planning, so.
Would this, because I know previously, we did some amendments to basically just auto, you know, if one section gets auto updated, we don't have to go back and change the other code. You know, a certain part of the code will automatically refer to a different chapter.
Right.
And so that's just carrying that through this?
Yeah, and also if we have bigger changes like that, we're going to do as a part of the comp plan updates, then we need to address that. So we kind of don't know what that is right now, but I'm sure we will have those things that we need to definitely address. And we want to make sure that our land use map and our zoning maps and our requirements are all consistent with one another as we're going through this. So that will be a lift as part of our comp plan amendments as well. And then you guys had an intro on engineering and public work standards previously. That is also a huge identified need, and we'll be continuing to go through that with the new city engineer and a new public works director coming on at some point here shortly. Then the city engineer has been looking through the draft, and so those drafts will start coming to you guys here, and we'll just work through those as we go. And we'll start with streets still. And that's on the agenda for February as well, to work on the street standards first, and then roll through the other provisions for domestic water, sewer, stormwater, if we need to do any updates to those, and other things related to that. So those are throughout several titles in our code right now, and you guys will be working on that. And then some of the other things that, the other business that we have ongoing is we provide planning commission with an update of development activities, and we'll continue to do that as we move forward, just to keep you in the loop on that. We're currently and have been in 2022, and currently still working on all of our new updates to our software, permitting software, where we've transitioned from paper submittals to all electronic submittals. We've got new software, which is common in the permitting world, track it, My Building Permit, and Bluebeam, which is software where you do review, electronic review of plans and permits. And so we're hoping that we're going to be fully ready to put this as a public-facing permitting software in May of this year. We have all of the historical permits that need to be migrated from the current permitting system to the new permitting system, and then what's going to be different from our old system, which is not great. I mean, we kind of cobbled it together during COVID for electronic submittal, but this will be, also have a public-facing portal. So the public will be able to look and see what's going on. Hey, what's Bob next door doing as far as his permits go? And then also applicants can have, everything will be available to them in the permit portal to know for inspections or development review, everything that's going on with their permit. So they're up to date as it happens. So that will be a huge improvement. So everybody tells me that for a major software update like we're doing, that the first six months are going to be, you know, kind of crafting a little bit of changes. I'm hoping not a lot. Hopefully, we've got our stuff together around here, but that we'll have to work out a little bit of the kinks, but hopefully, we'll be riding pretty good as we move forward. So we're trying to really think on the front end, so we don't have to make a lot of changes on that. Also, light rail is ongoing. There are some rumblings about light rail and schedules, and we're probably due for a update, which we try to do a couple of times a year from Sound Transit. So we have a meeting the first Wednesday of February, and after that, we'll try to get them in here to provide the planning commission an update on where we're at with that. And then as part of the budget, we were able to get some money for the planning commission for training purposes, conferences, et cetera. There wasn't a lot of that going on, and money allocated for that necessarily. So we have some money now for that, both for 2023 and 2024. So we'd like to see us take advantage of that and get some training as far as your planning commission meetings go, something you guys would like to see. And then also opportunities for you guys to do some training online, or attend workshops, or maybe go to a conference if you'd like to. So there's some availability there for you guys to do those things now, which I think is very important as well. So that's some of the things that I have outlined for the work program. You have a tentative joint meeting with the city council on March 16th, which is what's something we do every year, where the planning commission will go over their accomplishments for the previous year, and then you will go through your draft work program with the city council. So I tried to envision the things that we needed to do as far as the budget process this year, so we would have funds available to do some of these things. So with that, I will quit talking and let you guys ask some questions.
Anybody have any questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, I have many questions. Apologies again. I'm pretty excited about this, that you put the development activities report and the electronic permitting together, because there's a possibility of getting a lot of good data about our permitting and our projects coming in. I see you've listed it biannually, but one of the things I would hope to do is have sort of more frequent updates in terms of like, what kinds of permits we're seeing come in versus pre-apps, versus what's being completed, versus the size of projects, just to kind of get more data on that. It doesn't, it's just kind of a general thought right now. We don't have to decide what data we want to look at, but if there is like data that you have or thinking of collecting, just kind of either as a dashboard or something that like might help make decisions, I'd be really interested to hear about that and whatever everyone else wants to think of as well. I know like housing affordability is a big concern, so we can track things like, I don't know if you can track like the cost of the permits, or the number of units, or things like that that are coming online relative to the cost, but I think there's some really cool possibilities there. And so I'm really excited you're getting that system set up.
I would say if there are certain, if there's certain information that the planning commission would like to see as far as reports, other than, hey, we took in this many permits, electrical permits, or other things that we collect data about the time it takes us to get to issue a permit and those type of things. If there is some other information you guys would like to see as a whole, it would be helpful to know that, so we could try to build that into the system of some of that information you would like to see, to see if we can get that going. I would also ask, would a, like a quarterly development activities report be more?
Given the pace of what we're seeing, it feels about right. And also, kind of to your other point, it would be cool to see what kind of data you're collecting now as well, just to know it's available.
Yeah, and that's kind of in, that's kind of in flux. I kind of call that, well, I haven't been kind for the data we've collected. I tend to call it garbage in, garbage out for the permit or the performance measures and stuff that we've measured in the past. I kind of feel like, who cares on a lot of it? And so I would like your input as to some of those things that you guys would like to see. You know, I'm going to be wanting to see, you know, certain things as far as department performance and how we're doing, but open to what other performance-type things that you guys would like to see as a planning commission, as well as far as that development activity goes. So, I mean, we can think about it, but we're in the process of, you know, putting that stuff together. So maybe we can, we can talk about that at our next planning commission, to put that on the agenda, again, just for you guys to kind of think about some of that, so we can talk to the folks that are helping us do that.
Yeah, that'd be great. And if you have like a list of the data you collect, or data you'd like to collect, or something, that would be really helpful to see as well.
Okay.
I know previously, you know, for years, we've, you know, on the sort of biannually or whenever we get the updates on this, you know, we'll get a map, and, you know, there'll be like 45, 50 different numbers on the map, and then it corresponds with an address, and then usually you talk about it. And I know with some of those projects, I'll be like, I swear, I've seen this same project on the map for the last four, you know, four years. And obviously, sometimes projects take a while.
Yeah, they do.
From the initial application until they're complete. I think what would be helpful, at least for us, especially with the pace that is, you know, we're planning on seeing the development, is maybe a standalone map that just shows new applications.
Okay. And that map, which we have to create now.
Yeah.
Is going to be an ongoing map with the new software. So anybody can open up the city website and see what's going on and what permits are active, which is a lot different than that point-in-time thing that we've had to do. You know, Bob Jones, a two-lot short plot at 250256th, or, you know, whatever, that type of thing. And then it's outdated as soon as we put that together. So the software is going to move us about 20 years ahead. Oh, cool. Yeah, so it'll be a lot more interactive and for everybody, and I think will really help if folks want to be informed or want information, that it's going to be more readily available. And I think more accountability in the services that we're providing as the city as well, which I think is important that. And yeah, in some cases, you know, if we have a subdivision, it gets prelim approval, then somebody has five years to complete it. So it may seem like, holy smokes, I've seen this thing six times rolling around, you know? And it's because you've seen it six times rolling around, because, yeah, you know, that thing takes long versus something else, so.
And I know, we, you know, there are a lot of, there's a lot of activity in the city that, you know, don't even usually make our radar, but it's the day-to-day work, you know?
Sure.
Your department handles. With, and I know for us, you know, probably what, I don't think I'm out of turn speaking for the entire planning commission here, is that we're, we're probably going to be most interested in the larger-scale projects, especially that are tied to all the changes that we have just made or are going to make to the comp plan, you know, things that have more, let's say, increase, you know, the potential to increase businesses and tax revenue in the city. You know, that being said, still, you know, every, every type of land use proposal and, you know, development proposal is important. But I know that there are, there are certain projects, just because of the size, scope, and scale, and the impact that they're going to have, is going to, we're probably going to be a little bit more interested in those versus, you know, like you said, a two, you know?
Right, yeah.
But granted, that, you know, just because that doesn't, you know, that two short subdivision doesn't affect the entire city as a whole, it does affect the people on that street maybe, depending on what they're proposing.
Yeah, absolutely.
I want to be clear, that's just as important, but I know, you know, what we, you know, what I would say, what, the biggest thing we want to see is, you know, the larger-scale stuff, because that is a direct result of the codes that we've changed and the policies that we've changed, you know, that's sort of the fruits of the labor on that aspect, you know, moving forward with the city. So I think that would be the highest priority, but still, you know, we like all the information, just maybe that's the cherry on top, or, you know, page one of the report.
Okay.
However you want to do it.
Can I add on to that?
Yeah.
So I think the larger projects are definitely important, but I think the smaller projects, while they might not individually have like citywide impacts, if we're talking about things like missing middles, zoning reform, and ADU reform that we're looking into, aggregate data is going to be really important in measuring these as well. I know in Seattle, they do collect this data, and like you see this massive spike in like, you know, after ADU reform, that like, you know, they're building all these like starter home-size buildings in Seattle. So it's actually kind of addressing like a gap that they had. So I think, thinking of like what kind of data we want to collect in terms of this is easily collectible, like, would be really helpful as well in terms of looking at policy.
And I'm not saying that's not important. I'm expecting to see that in the report as well. It's just historically, this report that we've received has just kind of been a all-at-once on the map, you know, everything sort of one list. I'm looking for more categorized and curated.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's good. Like, you just need to break it down a little bit more into these, like, what kind of data do we want?
Yeah, I think, yeah, we'll give you both, for sure. So, and then, you know, that can morph over time too, just trying to, if we can build as much as we can, like I said, into the system to start out and try to think about that, then we're going to have tweaks to it versus like, oh my gosh, we have huge gaps of where we're, you know, we're collecting the data for a little bit of time, because, you know, numbers, it all varies. When we're working with, say, for instance, major projects over multiple years, some of the things will land on a certain year, so it'll seem like, oh, wow, there's a lot of, say, for instance, valuation of projects that came in, and it looks like a big number, and then next year is like, oh, what the heck happened? Well, it just is depending on when stuff is falling as well. So sometimes, yeah, we track it, but it's important to know how those numbers work and what they mean. And I think that was my problem with how we collected data previously, that it wasn't really apples and apples. It's kind of apples and oranges sometimes, so.
And I know that question had come up previously.
Yeah.
Somebody actually had raised that, so.
Yeah.
I don't remember who, but, yeah, they noticed. It's like, wait a minute, it's just so high, and then the next year, just craters.
Yeah. So, and it's not necessarily because the work stops, it's just how things land, when, and so it's a lot nicer when we have some historical patterns that we can look to versus just kind of like that snapshot in time type of thing that we've been doing. So, and I think that will be helpful as well.
Does anybody else have any questions, comments, suggestions?
On the data collection or on other things?
On anything.
Sorry, I keep feeling like I dominate the conversation here. The, if anyone else wants to talk, please go ahead, because.
Let me do a check. Rory, you good?
I'll butt in here, and just quickly, I'm not sure what the protocol is for remote members here, but just want to say that I think in the past, like, two times, I've been a part of this exercise, you know, we've had a lot of little, you know, whether the policy wants or would, you know, nice-to-have type things. I appreciate that, you know, the last six months certainly has really, you know, funneled our attention to the comp plan update that we're doing this year and next. And I'm looking forward to getting into, you know, the nitty-gritty, or at least the medium-depth issues there, and, you know, doing justice to the stuff that we've kind of put a pin in, or have had some, sort of danced around the edges of certain topics, be they related to town center or specific sort of, you know, say, road safety standards, you know, thing of other like town center, pedestrian. say road safety standards, you know, thing of other like town center pedestrian type conversations that, that we've had and, and so on and so forth. So just wanted to say or give my nod to, to this agenda as proposed by staff and just put, put down a marker for more sort of granular conversations as we proceed.
Anyone else?
Just a quick question. The zoning code amendments and major comprehensive plan update are sort of like, you know, very large scope in a single line. Is it safe to assume that we'll look into that a little bit more granularly further down the line, sort of after some of these emergency things?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're going to be doing these some together. So, you know, instead of having a single thing on the agenda, that comp plan exercises will be an ongoing thing for the planning commission as we work through those and there will be discussion on all of those. So yeah, when we start talking about specifics of code and some of the changes that we need to make for the comp plan, then definitely there's going to be, the, the work happens at the planning commission level, or it should work. The work should happen at the planning commission within council, taking a look at what the planning commission has adopted. But all of the public outreach and all of the input and all of the, a lot of, the majority of the conversation should be happening at this level.
Okay. Do you foresee that taking place after our code updates and building code updates and CIPA provisions, or do you see that sort of filtered in along with those?
Correct. So I'll talk a little bit about scheduling in the director's report, but yeah, it's not going to wait until after those are done. It's, work's happening right now on some of those things. So yeah, they'll be, we'll have a more refined scope of work and timing once the consultant is selected, where that's going to be charted out for adoption.
That's all I had, other than training opportunities, which I'm a little, I've never heard of, but I'm guessing we'll learn about it later.
Yeah, historically in the past, you know, when there's the opportunity for some sort of short course, you know, usually staff will let us know and say, hey, it's going to be held in this city on this date, you know, it's free or whatever, feel free to go. It is nice that there's a little bit of budget to allow, you know, some, for some expanded training opportunities. Hopefully, you know, that may even include maybe covering the cost of registration for APA State Conference, which I think this year is in Spokane. The national conference is coming up real quick and I doubt anyone's going to probably go to that. It's in Philly though, and people want to go. But, you know, just those, those kind of opportunities, you know, especially if there's, you know, you know, any training is good training, but you know, especially if something of value that, you know, we can directly apply to here, that, that's, that's great. It's, it's nice that, you know, we have a little bit of a budget for that now. And I'll just sort of, you know, kind of circle back on kind of the comment you made. Yeah, normally this list is a lot longer. And normally we're spending a couple of meetings, having to pare it down and try and prioritize and figure out what, a lot of this stuff is just kind of, it auto happens, it gives us the opportunity to, you know, maybe enhance what the code's going to be. But the comp plan itself could be three of these pages. So it's just summarized in one line here, but.
Yeah.
For, especially for our newer planning commissioners, yeah, that, that is a Herculean lift in itself, so. Normally I'd be like, yeah, it's kind of short. Back in the day, this was like two meetings, but no, yeah, this is, this is going to be a lot of work. That, that first line is a lot of work in itself, so.
Yeah, it's all relative. And there has been some changes to the Growth Management Act that have to be addressed in updating the, the, the major update to the comp plan for all these jurisdictions, both for housing inventories, and that's a lot more robust. And there's other portions of the Growth Management Act that definitely are going to need more work from everybody than, than has been in the past. And then we also have the legislative session going on right now. Housing is a huge deal and I'm sure we'll probably see additional legislation out of this legislative session. And so that will feed into additional work probably that we'll need to do as well. So, you know, never, and then there's always the surprises. I didn't think we were going to have a code update for building and fire this year because the last one kept on getting put off because of COVID, but it's like, nope, okay, here it is. So you never know when some stuff that's being worked on at the state level, sometimes it kind of grinds and then all of a sudden, whoop, okay, here it is, and then we need to address it. So this is what we know and stay tuned because we might have other things that pop up along the way, so. But I would say, even if we have a humago list, what can we actually accomplish? I would like to see us try to stick with a list of stuff that we can really try to say, check, 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 we got some things done and not just kind of put a whole bunch of stuff that realistically is probably not going to get done. So we can focus on doing some of these things, then that would be a lot of work on your part to get these things accomplished, which would be great, so.
I just had one quick question for the electronic permitting section with the my building permit coming in and track it. Does the staff currently use Blue Beam or do they use a different program?
We use Blue Beam, but it's been selectively used by certain people trying to incrementally get licensing and then get training. So we've had Blue Beam for the last several months. And my desire is that anybody that's doing development review has accessibility to all of these things and then we are all fed into the same system, meaning right now code enforcement uses a totally different software, finance uses a different software, which is not necessarily different than other jurisdictions, but a lot of our software that should interact and speak to each other does not. And so, and, and then where we have antiquated software, what I say is people start building systems outside of the system and that's where you get into trouble and that's where basically we've been for the last 20 years. I would like to destroy, burn down and do away with all of those systems outside of the system. So that's, that, that's the goal of putting this all together and we're collectively have access to information, not only internally but externally, that the public has access to information as well, more readily than what they do right now. So that'd be a, it's going to be a huge leap forward for us.
I think most of us probably have dealt with that at our jobs at one point or another.
We're just.
I'm currently dealing with that issue, multiple systems that don't talk to each other.
Yeah. It's not fun. And, and it really communication wise and being able to work as a team, it really interrupts a lot of things. And that's where we get a lot of our bad information too, where that's that garbage in, garbage out. If Bob had a separate spreadsheet and what I say is Bob doesn't live here anymore, then that information's lost. And we, we all don't live here anymore at some point in time, every one of us. And so making sure that that information is readily available and that we're keeping track of things, since it's public information in city government, then that's, you know, really important that we're handling that public information correctly as well. So we're getting there and if we can get this up and running this year, then we will, not if, we will, then that's going to be something that we've been working on, just trying to get funding for and then actually doing that work behind the scenes. So that'll be, that'll be great, so.
All right, anybody else? Any questions, comments? Obviously this is, this is something that we revisit throughout the year anyway, so it's constantly evolving, things will get added, things will get dropped, things will get pushed to the next year. So with our major stuff, it's like we can't keep pushing it because we're mandated by the state to do it. So it's, we're at the point now where it, it has to be done regardless, so.
Yep.
Okay, well, I'm not hearing or seeing anyone else so wanting to speak, so I will say thank you very much.
Okay.
And we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, which is director's report.
Okay. Thank you. So we need to have an election for chair and vice chair on the planning commission. So that typically is done in January. We didn't have a meeting last week and I was just going over our stuff and was like, oh, we need to have an election for chair and vice chair. So we will put that on the agenda for the first meeting in February for that to take place. Also, just to let you know, we do have a request for an annexation. It's a single parcel and we have several parcels that are island parcels, meaning they're surrounded entirely by city limits. In this case, this property is on 214th Street and the folks that are petitioning to annex would like to hook up to city sewer. Right now they're on septic tank and drain field. And so that will be going through city council if they want to entertain that annexation and then we will go through that process of all things we do for annexation. And then that goes back to a public hearing with the city council for them to make a decision if they choose to entertain the annexation request. Interviews are happening in March, as far as I know, for city, our candidates for the city manager position. So that is moving forward. There has been an outside firm doing a search for candidates for, for that position and then interviews will be done by city council to fill that position. So should have more information in March and I believe there'll, there's typically reception that the community is invited to, to speak or meet the different candidates, the finalist for the city manager position as well. City council vacancy interviews for that vacancy are this month, next Monday and Tuesday, the January 30th and 31st. So getting close to doing those interviews and filling that vacancy, which I would imagine would happen within the next couple of weeks, we should have maybe some information next time we meet on the 13th. I'll also be bringing you the draft scope of work for the comp plan update at our next meeting. So just have you guys peruse that and take a look at that so we can get that scope out to get that, some of that work awarded for part of the comp plan update that we need consultant help with. And since we're doing all elements of the comp plan, we'll need work and then we need to do a major environmental impact statement for our planning efforts as well. That hasn't been done, embarrassing to say, since like the 1980s, which, you know, needs to be done. And also, just to remind you, March 16th, if you can mark your calendars, I'd like to have all the planning commission to come for that joint work session to show off what you did last year and then also present your work plan. You guys can decide as a collective how you want to present that, but if, as many planning commissioners that could be there on the 16th for that joint work session, I think is the best case scenario because it's from you guys as a collective, as a body. So staff will be there, but typically you guys present your, your, your work plan and such to city council that evening. And with that, I don't have any other things to report that I can think of. If you have any questions on anything, as always, happy to answer them.
Anyone have any questions? Not hearing or seeing any. I would just add a little context to that annexation request. It has been a generational effort with the city to try and get these last few remaining parcels to be annexed. And they're, they've just been consistent holdouts and usually they finally have to relent when their septic fails. So I think this is the second or third one we've had probably in the last five or six years.
Yeah, and there will be more. And you're exactly right, it's usually, we, we have a septic tank failure, new septic requirements of where you have to replace your existing septic with a reserve and then the cost, which a lot of people don't realize how expensive it is just to get a new septic system put in versus hooking up to sewer. In this case, sewer goes right by this property. So it's not like you're dragging it from somewhere else. And in most cases, in a lot of these cases where they're the island properties surrounded by the city, sewer's already there. So it's not, it's not as heavy of, of a lift as, oh, I've got to drag sewer 200 feet to my house and pay the expense of that. It's right out in the road, right in front of you. So it's a little bit easier to do that, so.
Yeah, 214th is on the edge of the city and that's where the last few have come on. So you know, they're all of the same age.
Yep.
And they're all going to be, but little's left are probably going to be failing soon.
Yep, yep.
But there are a few, like Christie said, there are a few islands scattered throughout the city and those may never come in, at least under the current owners, so. It's just, yeah, there was an active effort with the city for quite a while to try and reach out to those, those homeowners, those property owners, you know, under different staff over the years and it just was a futile attempt, you know, they just, they weren't budging, so.
Yeah. They want to live in county.
Yes, go ahead.
Question along those lines. Sorry, my video stopped for some reason and I can't turn it on. But Christie, I was just wondering, I know this is a council issue, but piqued my interest since we went down this, this path. Does the homeowner, you know, asking for annexation then generally, you know, have to pay the, the difference for sewer connection or whatever thereafter? Is that sort of a negotiation between staff, council and the, the residents?
The resident takes on all indebtedness to be able to do that. So the, the property owner would pay to hook up to sewer service or water service or whatever that is and the cost of doing that. But like I said, with, if you probably do the, the cost of hooking up to sewer versus someone trying to even say they have enough land available, which this is a fairly large piece of property, even if they have available land for a new sep, or new drain field and reserved drain field, the health requirements for these drain fields are pretty robust compared to what they were back when these drain fields came into being. And so I wouldn't be surprised, in some cases, I've seen a lot of times where that is more expensive than hooking up to sewer. So that's probably why we're seeing these folks in here, frankly, but they'll have to pay the cost of hooking up, yep.
And I want to say in the past, like when it was the last one that was an emergency hookup, the city worked with the homeowner, they, like there was some sort of memorandum of understanding.
Yeah.
Some sort of payment agreement, they didn't have to, they didn't have to front the entire cost before we would hook them up because it was a public health issue.
Yeah, sure, yeah. And in some cases, yeah, that would be bad where it gets that critical where, you know, you don't want to see that happening as well. I don't, I'm not aware that, that that's the case here, but I would say, yeah, it's probably time, so.
All right, anybody else have any questions for Christie? Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question on the training. How do we know?
I have a question on the training. How do we know what training to take? Like, you're new to this whole planning world.
Yeah. So as Chair Batista said, there is what's called a short course in local planning and would like to see all the new planning commissioners take that. In saying that, beyond that, it would be anything that you guys felt like, hey, if you wanted staff to bring something in about any type of conducting a public meeting or hearing or anything like that, that you would like some additional training, happy to schedule something like that. Or, you know, like Chair Batista said, there's a yearly conference. There's also regional training opportunities. Those things are starting to get back online again. And so we'll make an attempt to try to get that information out to all of you folks of like, hey, this training is available. Some trainings are free, some trainings, oh, it's $50 or $35. A lot of trainings now are in person, or you can just do them electronically. That that's still quite popular. Or, you know, we do have enough money where, hey, Spokaloo bound, you're going to go stay a couple nights at a hotel and party it up and go to the planning conference. I'm all about it. So I mean, it's a great way to network and take some really good courses about planning. And there'll probably be a lot of comp plan update information at these things that are coming up. And so all of that's good stuff. And so we do have enough money to, not unlimited, but we do have for everybody to do a little a little something along the way here. So, yep.
And then I would sort of add, you kind of covered it more in the 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 work program versus the director's report, but it'll be interesting to hear Sound Transit's update. Since they're basically pitting two different regions against each other, Lynwood versus Bellevue, who wins out? So.
I'll I'll take bets now.
Yeah.
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 I think I'm going to win. If anybody wants to bet me.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't advise it. I would be shocked otherwise. So, yeah, I think, you know, getting a handle on on what the community can actually expect would be nice to hear.
All right. So not seeing anybody else have any questions or comments for the staff reports, not on the agenda, but I'll go ahead and add it. So miscellaneous business by call of planning commissioners, anybody have any miscellaneous business they need to bring up? Any known absences coming up? I actually have one myself. The first meeting in February. Have a previous engagement that I'm planning on being at. Depending on the schedule of that, I may be able to pop in remotely, like Rory is doing tonight. We'll see, it might have to be from my car. We'll, we'll, we'll see how it goes. I don't know honestly what's going to be happening that night. So
Okay.
it's a little tough for me to plan out this this far in advance. But if if it's some, if there's enough stuff that's being added to the work program for that day, I may have to cancel what I my plans had come in. But for now, I'm planning on not being at that meeting. So fingers crossed, see how it goes.
Well, I hope not. And we'll get the materials to you early. So then if you had any comments or whatever, then, you know, that that you had, then hopefully you could do that. So we don't want you to, I know you typically don't miss any meetings. So.
Very rare.
Yeah, very rarely.
The last time I missed a meeting, it was medical related.
Yeah.
So, you know, surgery and months of recovery. So it's, otherwise, I generally don't miss meetings. So.
Yeah. So we'll get that to you. And then as long as we have our trusty vice chair, we should be okay.
Sorry.
On that, I too hope to always be able to come in person. But if I was not able, how far in advance do I have to say, can I attend remotely?
I think we just like need a day. I mean, even earlier, like today, for instance, if you were like, hey, I need to attend remotely, then we can set you up with Zoom and set you up like we did Rory, so he can attend.
Yeah, I think I emailed it like six something this morning. And I'll just take this opportunity to express my thanks to staff and and the commission for letting me do this. And I'm smiling saying this. Video's still not working. But yeah, Janine, it's, it's, it's nice to have the accommodation. So thanks and greetings from Olympia.
Yeah. Yeah, I would say now, you know, COVID kind of threw us into this world of sort of this hybrid meeting environment. I'm expecting more more of you to probably take advantage of this. If you can't make it in person, but still are able to attend from wherever you're at, Rory still holds the record for
Absolutely, yes.
attending a meeting, not Olympia, but Paris.
It was Toulouse.
Toulouse, excuse me, France.
The wine cellar in Toulouse.
Other side of the pond. So.
He's bragging now. So, you know.
Rub it in.
Yeah, the wine cellar.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, hopefully, you know, hopefully, it's, you know, it was one thing when we were all Zoom. But, you know, kind of this hybrid of some in person, some Zoom, you know, there'll obviously be some kinks to work out, but don't let that discourage you to try and take advantage of the situation. Obviously, knock on wood, tonight, it worked out great. But, you know, technology doesn't always want to cooperate either. So.
But, yeah, I mean, we did remote where staff was here and planning commissioners, you know, were attending remotely for for quite a while. So, yeah, we absolutely have the capability of doing that when you need it. So don't hesitate. If we would rather have you participate remotely than than not participate. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, there may be even meetings in the future for me where I'll still be at work.
Yeah.
Because the amount of OT that I have to put in right now just for us to keep up. So it's, obviously, tonight wasn't like one of those cases. But, yeah, there might be cases where I might just clock off of work and
Yeah.
clock into the meeting. So
This is how, yeah.
Otherwise, I wouldn't get here in time. So.
That's exactly what made me think about it. I mean, I worked from home today, but I just work live right up the road, walking distance, but I don't walk. Oh, my gosh, I gotta hurry up. I don't want to be late.
Yeah.
And I didn't, you know, I don't think five minutes before the meeting is probably good, but.
Yeah, you're here.
They might, okay.
Yeah.
I just thought, I'm just going to make it work.
Yeah, we just, if you know you're not going to make it, though, more than maybe a day's note, just because there might be more than one of you who are can't, you know, saying, hey, I can't make it. And if we find out, you know, at the last second, we don't have a quorum, that causes bigger issues.
Yeah.
You know, the further in advance that we know we're not going to have you here at all, the better.
Yep. Then it saves the rest of the planning commission. Definitely if we don't have a quorum, then we can get the word out. But.
Worst case scenario, you know, without a quorum, we technically can have a meeting, we just can't make any decisions. And the meeting just is informational meeting, but it's not really good to make staff have to repeat themselves because they're giving the information to us, but not, not the people who are here. And then they're going to have to figure out another way to get it. So sometimes it's just easier to postpone the meeting altogether.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Miscellaneous business? Not hearing or seeing anything. So with that, I'll go ahead and declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.